The council will come to order. Please use the e-vote application to record your presence.
The voting is now open. If you have any troubles logging into your device, please raise your hand and we will come around. I'm now going to call on the aldermen who have not marked themselves present. So please mark yourself present. If you have any issues, you could also raise your hand. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is not present. Alderman Dahl. Alderman Dahl is present. Alderman King. Alderman King is not present. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston is not present. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is not present. Alderman Solowski Garza. Thank you. Nice and loud. Alderman Abarka. Not present. Alderman Burke. Not present. Alderman Lopez. Not present. Alderman Coleman. Not present. Alderman Moore. Oh, sorry. You have other. Alderman Curtis. Not present. Alderman Taylor. Not present. Alderman Brookins. Oh, Alderman Taylor? Oh, Alderman Taylor is present. Alderman Coleman is present. Alderman Tabara. Alderman Tabara is not present. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Sichu Lopez is not present. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado is present. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is present. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Talafaro is not present. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Wagispack. Alderman Wagispack not present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez not present. Alderman Austin. Not present. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Knudsen. Alderman Knudsen is present. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is not present. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is not present. Alderman Talafaro, I'll mark you present. Anyone else I missed?
Alderman Tabara.
Alderman Tabara is present. Alderman Sichu Lopez is present. Anyone else? All right, we are closing the vote.
Alderman Silverstein is present.
Alderman Silverstein is present. Madam Mayor, all members present have been recorded. We have a quorum.
There are 39. There are 39 members present. We have a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered this morning by Pastor Noah Chung, a part community church in Hyde Park. Pastor, the floor is yours.
Join me in prayer. Gracious and merciful Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for this gathering of our civic leaders who are concerned with the welfare of this city, of our city. Thank you for their service and their sacrifice. Father, we also thank you for many blessings, for these provisions you give each day, like the very heat in this building that keeps us warm and dry. We thank you for your love that comforts us, gives us peace and guides us. We thank you for Chicago, our city, full of grit and diversity and with its many challenges as well. We thank you for every good and perfect gift that comes from above, our heavenly Father. In your scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Help our citizens to do so. Therefore, I also pray for our governing authorities who have this incredible responsibility to lead our city. I ask that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid all the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a thirst and a hunger for justice and righteousness for the needs of our people. Grant them a confidence soaked in humility to do what is good and right, no matter what others say. Grant them the clarity and creativity to solve the many complex and systemic issues facing our city. Grant them the ability to work in harmony with one another, even when there is disagreement. And last but not least, grant them and their families peace and joy as they all know the work is heavy. I also pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give insurance of what would please you and would benefit those who live and work in around our beloved city of Chicago. Lord, your kingdom is an everlasting kingdom. In your name, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, it's public comment. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker today is Daniel Riggiara.
My name is Daniel Riggiara. I am a member of Socialist Alternative here in Chicago. My comment here today is to address the people of Chicago, not the people in this chamber. Those who live here in Chicago know the situation well. Every year, big business and the police get more and more resources, while ordinary people, the working people of the city, suffer. We suffer higher and higher prices, higher and higher taxes. Meanwhile, large companies like Amazon only pay a tiny percentage of what they should, or oftentimes, they pay nothing. During the pandemic, we've seen Jeff Bezos and other billionaires get richer and richer, while the rest of us lose more and more. The Democrats don't just passively let this happen. They are directly responsible for it. All of you as workers and ordinary people in this city implicitly know this. You experience it daily. We are here today to say, no more, enough. We're here today with Alder Byron Sichu Lopez to introduce a bill that we call the Amazon Tax. This bill here in Chicago is modeled on a similar bill that Socialist Alternative won in the city of Seattle. What this Amazon tax would do is raise more than half a billion dollars from Amazon and the largest companies here in Chicago. It would not touch the small businesses in our communities that are already suffering enough. Proceeds from this Amazon tax would go directly to fund services that have been abandoned by Mayor Lightfoot and the Democrats here in Chicago. Specifically, they would be used to directly fund public schools, affordable housing, mental health services, and violent prevention programs. Here are some of the important lessons we in Socialist Alternative learned from our fight in Seattle for this tax on Amazon. We learned that the Democrats and big business are not going to stand aside idly and let this happen. In Seattle, the Democrats in City Council illegally overturned our first Amazon tax we won in 2018, but we came back in 2020 to win a tax double the size. And we were successful in Seattle for two important reasons. First, we had an independent socialist councilwoman, Shama Sawant, leading on the inside. Second, we had a mass movement of working people in the streets demanding this be put into law. That second part is absolutely key. Let me repeat that. This was won in Seattle not by begging the Democrats, but by a mass movement demanding it directly. That first key aspect we have here, Byron Sichu Lopez, an independent socialist. That second part, we still need. We still need to build a mass movement. We invite you, the working people of Chicago, come fight for what we need in our communities. We are not here to ask or beg or plead with the Democrats. We are here to demand what we need. People of Chicago, fight with us, because when we fight, we win. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggiara, for your comments. Our next speaker is Cassandra Chachopoulos.
Good morning. My name is Cassandra Chachopoulos. I'm a 17-year veteran of Chicago Public Schools. I teach at Prosser Career Academy in the 36th Ward, and I am a resident in the 29th Ward. I'm the union delegate at Prosser Career Academy, and I'm also on the executive board of the Chicago Teachers Union. I've had to deal with a lot of CPS shenanigans in my career, but becoming a new mother in July and navigating the abysmal parental leave process was a new low for CPS. I had to have an emergency C-section in order to deliver my daughter. When I found out that they had to open me up, I was emotional, I was anxious, I was scared. But one of the most disturbing thoughts I had was, hey, maybe I'd get eight weeks instead of six weeks of short-term disability. Afterwards, I reflected on how truly messed up it was to live in the wealthiest nation, one of the wealthiest cities in this country, and not have a decent parental leave policy, where a woman would look on the bright side of a C-section. It's medieval. In order to spend more time with my newborn daughter, which research shows is good for the birthing parent and the baby, I used up almost all of my bank sick days. Now I worry that if I get sick, I won't be able to take a sick day for myself or for my child if she gets sick. I'm also at an economic disadvantage. My male coworkers have over 100 days of banked time that they can use to retire earlier, to cash out. In a profession that's dominated by women, this is discriminatory. If you want to attract more people to the teaching profession, we can't short-change them on parental leave. Many of my friends and family in the private sector get four to six months of paid parental leave. So you can imagine how excited I was when the mayor announced in the fall that she was going to grant city workers 12 weeks of paid parental leave. My heart burst with joy, only to be crushed several months later when she rescinded her promise to offer to public-sector employees like myself. We were so close to getting this basic right that most countries offer. There was even a timeline for the Board of Education to vote on it in January. If I choose to have a second child, I have to be extremely strategic about when I have it so that I can attempt to be with the baby for as long as possible, because I won't have banked sick days to take. I cannot believe that in 2023, my employer, the mayor, has control over where I live and when I'm going to have a child. The Handmaid's Tale isn't far off. When people wonder why CTU gets involved in the political realm, it's because politicians like the mayor have an outsized role in our personal and professional lives. And so we need champions on our side, like many of you aldermen who stood with us at our press conference this morning. In 2019, Mayor Lightfoot, you messed with our jobs and our students, and we went on an 11-day strike. Now you're messing with our babies, and I know that there's nothing that this mama bear won't do to protect her child. I urge the mayor, the members of the City Council, and the handpicked Board of Education to negotiate the details of the 12-week parental leave policy with CTU and approve it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chachopoulos, for your comments. Our next speaker is Janine Ranial.
Hello, good morning. My name is Janine Ranial. I'm an organizer with Independent Drivers Wheel of Illinois. I'm here today because 10 of 1,000 ride shares and delivered drivers are very vulnerable to sounding unguaranteed, unfair, and arbitrary, desactivation practices. Many drivers find themselves only unable to work to support their families due to a variety of reasons, source, and problem, and uploading their documents to the apps and being incorrectly flagged and fraudulent, as well as being subject to false complaints for customers who are either looking for a free ride or free meal or are railing against a driver who is trying to follow the rules and traffic laws. Geek walkers deserve to be able to work with dignity and respect without fear, albeit terminated with no due process and no investigation. I'm asking to City Council members to support and pass meaningful legislation to put an end to aggravated desactivation. Please support the ordinance that is being introduced today for Alderman Woman Sue Garza, a company that cares most about making profits, most often experienced of workers who drive long hours to make ends meet. It's time to stop with this company, because the families have a many, many lonesome work in no... I complained with this, and two times the families... When my familia y las familias tenemos que soportar y parar estos abusos de estas compañías. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Ranial, for your comments. Our next speaker is Sarah Chang.
Hello, good morning. My name is Sarah Chang, and I'm a nursing student at the University of Illinois Chicago, where my faculty are currently on strike, fighting for the future of higher education. I'm also a lifelong resident of the 49th Ward. I'm here to demand that the City Council pass the Amazon tax as fast as possible with no carve-outs or exceptions. We need the Amazon tax to fund permanently affordable social housing, public education, and violence prevention and mental health services. Corporations like Amazon pay little to nothing in taxes, while working people are barely getting by, working multiple jobs and splitting rent just to survive. This City Council and administration have passed austerity budget after austerity budget, cutting public services year after year. We need affordable housing and fully-funded public education, but working-class people shouldn't have to pay for a crisis we didn't create. A tax like this was successfully passed in Seattle in 2020 and raises $240 million each year. Since being passed, they haven't seen the mass exodus of businesses that opponents threatened would happen. Rather, we see a sustained stream of funding for social housing. We need this tax here in Chicago. Y'all run for office and get elected, claiming you're here to represent the working people of Chicago, but time after time, we pay the brunt of corporations living tax-free in our city. Here's an opportunity for you all to show who you stand for in the city of Chicago, working people or big business. Pass the Amazon tax with no delays, no watering it down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chang, for your comments. Our next speaker is Stephen Everett.
Hello, Mayor Lightfoot, members of the City Council. Thank you all for having me here. It's an honor to meet every last one of y'all. I don't care what side y'all on, Democrat or Republican. We have a... My name is Stephen Everett. I'm a ride-share driver. And I just want to talk about an issue that ride-share drivers are having right now. That's just ridiculous, and this is something that we all can come together to solve. A lot of ride-share drivers right now are being unfairly deactivated for no reason at all. Sometimes passengers lie and everything. A lot of us ride-share drivers, this is our only job. This is what keeps us out of trouble. 70% of ride-share drivers are minorities and from, you know, bad neighborhoods. And it does give us a chance to make money, and this keeps us out of trouble. But if we're being unfairly deactivated, we can't, you know, work and get money. I just ask that all members here, if you can, please support Alder Woman Sue Garza. Support her. Please, please, please support her in what she's about to bring to the floor. And we are really appreciative. But, you know, I just want you guys to know that it's a lot of drivers that's suffering. And we're not only going through unfair deactivations, there's other things as well. But this is just what I want to speak on, because this is what's about to hit the floor. Mayor Lightfoot, I really appreciate y'all having us here. And like I said, no matter what side you're on, you know, we all need to come together and solve these issues, these minor issues that these trillion-dollar companies put on workers like me. We can definitely do better. Us Uber drivers, we run the city. We take people to work every day. We make sure people get home safe. We stop a lot of car accidents from happening, from drunk driving, and all of that. So we deserve to be treated right. We deserve to be treated fair. So just asking you guys to support Alder Woman Sue Garza. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Everett, for your comments. Our next speaker is Dustin Spence.
Good morning. My name is Dustin Spence. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative and a resident of the 49th Ward. I'm speaking today to demand that the City Council pass the Amazon tax as fast as possible with no carve-outs or exceptions. We need the Amazon tax to fund permanently affordable social housing, public education, and violence prevention and mental health services. Corporations like Amazon pay little to nothing in taxes, while working people are barely getting by, working multiple jobs and splitting rent just to survive. According to recent reporting, property taxes in Pilsen went up an average of 45% this year. And in my own neighborhood of Rogers Park, they went up 24%. Meanwhile, homelessness is increasing throughout the city. A tent encampment shares the park right next to my home. And yet, this City Council boycotted the Bring Chicago Home Ordinance, an ordinance which only began to address the problems working people face. Enough is enough. While working-class Chicagoans are feeling the crush of ever-increasing tax payments, we are told that the city has no money to pay for the things we so desperately need. This City Council and administration, both beholden to the Democratic Party and its corporate interests, have passed austerity budget after austerity budget, cutting public services year after year, while spending billions on an ever-expanding budget for the wholly ineffective, corrupt, and racist CPD. This shows once again that Democrats are not the friends of working Chicagoans, regardless of whether they label themselves progressive. This is why working people need representatives that are fully independent from the Republicans and Democrats, representatives who will fight for us and not the corporations. We need affordable housing and fully-funded public education, but working-class people shouldn't have to pay for a crisis we didn't create. This administration has increasingly shifted the cost of funding CPS to the school district, which in turn can only raise funds through property tax levies. This intentional defunding of our public schools strips working-class Chicagoans of the primary educational resource for our children. The budget shortfall could reach as much as $600 million by 2050 without additional funding. This is funding that the mayor has refused to address. The ordinance that will be presented today addresses this very issue and could raise over half a billion dollars every single year and raises it without passing the burden on to working people. Pass the Amazon tax with no delays and no watering it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spence, for your comments. Our next speaker is Edward Korecki.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My comment is about St. Adalbert Church in Pilsen. This historic and architecturally significant church has been orange-rated for 26 years, yet it is still in danger of destruction. In November, the integrity of the church was violated when the beautiful Pieta statue was removed. It's now over three years since Commissioner of Planning and Development Maurice Cox announced that the commission would move forward with landmarking the church, yet it has still not happened. Why, Mayor Lightfoot, is your administration blocking the landmark status for this historic church? Why, Mayor Lightfoot, did you and Alderman Spessato and Robirus interfere to block the downzoning of this property in May 2020 after it was recommended by the zoning committee? Your actions are an insult to the Polish and Mexican immigrant communities and all Catholics and Chicagoans who want to see this beautiful church saved. The Pilsen community does not want development on this property, yet you will not honor their wishes. Mayor Lightfoot, your actions have opened yourself and the city to a lawsuit for violation of religious civil rights. Please stop opposing the wishes of your constituents and grant landmark status to St. Adalbert Church at the February 2023 meeting of the Commission on Landmarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Korecki, for your comments. Our next speaker is Bridget McBride.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, City Council members, and all attendees. As a resident of Chicago since 1989, one of my favorite hobbies is to get on our public transportation and explore one of our 77 neighborhoods throughout the city. One of these neighborhoods is Pilsen. And when traveling to Pilsen and getting off the pink line, you notice the spires of St. Adalbert's Church. For over 100 years, this destination has been home to the Polish and Mexican immigrants, as well as Catholics throughout the city to come and worship. In 2019, Maurice Cox was on board with moving to have this iconic Renaissance Revival complex landmarked. That stalled. And since then, five religious institutions have been landmarked. Three in Bronzeville, one in North Lawndale, and one in Bridgeport. Each of our 77 neighborhoods has an anchor that defines our community. In Pilsen, it's St. Adalbert. In order for economic growth and tourism to thrive and survive after everything we've been through, Mayor Lightfoot, I pray that you give Commissioner Maurice Cox permission to add to the next landmark commission agenda a preliminary vote to get protection in place to landmark Pilsen's iconic St. Adalbert's Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride, for your comments. Our next speaker is Dan McDermott.
Dan, press star six to unmute.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Mayor Lightfoot and City Council members, I am here to ask you to start the new year by seeking to do what is right for your constituents. St. Adalbert has been asking the city for landmark status for over three years. They have proved that it is well-deserved. Ward Miller of Preservation Chicago has testified to that. When I ask why it has not been granted, I am told that the mayor and some alderpersons do not like some of the 25th Ward alderman's actions. I ask you to be known not for infighting, but for hearing the people. St. Adalbert is a sacred space that deserves to be landmarked. The people have put forth business plans to bring in revenue from the convent to pay for maintenance of the church. They have been asking to correct a previous zoning designation and downzone, preventing huge developments that do not meet the needs of the neighborhood. I am a member of the 49th Ward, and I've also asked my alderwoman to seek landmark status for St. Ignatius, also closed by the archdiocese, but having the same famed architect as St. Adalbert. I have asked to keep the zoning that again does not allow developers to build yet more huge buildings in our dense neighborhood. I am appealing the closing of St. Ignatius to the Vatican. And when I talk to canon lawyers, they say they do not understand how the richest country in the world would destroy sacred spaces. It is unimaginable in Europe. I also hear that the council tends to do things to please the archdiocese. Why? There are all kinds of ways to pay their bills without destroying sacred spaces. I am a Catholic, but I am shocked to see what is going on with their decision-makers. As we approach an election, my guide for voting will be, did the mayor get things done and not let internal rivalries or alderman actions to get in the way of doing what is right? If a church qualifies for landmark status, give it to them. Currently, my ward has been designated one of the 10 best neighborhoods in the Midwest. We will be getting more tourists and visitors. We will be getting more tourists and visitors like in Pilsen. And we will be looking, they will be looking at such a historic place as St. Ignatius from an artistic and community-serving perspective. And it will increase and make visitors more impressed with our city. People would also be impressed with the historic sacred space in Pilsen. Please do the right thing, as Dr. Martin Luther King would do. End the rivalries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott, for your comments. Our next speaker is Andrew Kopinski.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and the members of the City Council and the general public. I'd like to speak to you this morning about St. Adalbert Church in the Pilsen community. I believe it should be landmarked as soon as possible. It should, it should be at the top item of the next Landmark Commission meeting on February 23rd. It's long overdue. And in addition, the property should be downzoned like other church properties as soon as possible. The Pilsen community supports this action. The St. Adalbert Catholic community supports this action. The Polish immigrant community supports this action. And the Mexican immigrant community supports this action. This is important in preserving the architectural and cultural history of Chicago. Sadly, the dismantling of St. Adalbert has begun with the removal of the St., the La Pieta statue. Time is of the absolute essence. There should be no more delays since, since time is of the essence. Mayor Lightfoot, please step up. Do the right thing. Landmark St. Adalbert Church inside and outside and landmark the equally historic rectory and convent. I thank you for your time and have a good and productive day.
Thank you, Mr. Kopinski, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes the public comment period. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, are resolutions. We have three resolutions today. And the first is a resolution honoring DePaul University on its one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary. If you wish to speak to this resolution, please raise your hand. Sure. We have in the box newly-minted president of DePaul, Rob Manuel, Eric Quizada is a student, Tommy Lee, who's a student, Juliana DeLeon is a student, Jalen Johnson, also a student, Elizabeth Clements, Alicia Pope, Peter Coffey, and Edgar Deleon. And I believe most of the students, maybe all of them, are from Chicago public schools. So welcome, one and all. Any members of the body that wish to speak to this? The Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to rise in support of this resolution as a fellow alumna, alumnus, nineteen eighty-five, Department of Finance. Congratulate you all. Congratulate the administration on a fine job. Congratulate these young students on, on getting your education at a fine institution. Wonderful place. I appreciate you coming out today. Go Blue Demons. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sawyer. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. I know I got to speak to you guys very briefly outside, but just congratulations on your representation. DePaul is a fantastic institution, though it was not where I went for my undergraduate degree. I've been graced, thank you, Ms. Pope, with a lovely Blue Demons pen, and it is where I went to grad school. We're really fortunate in the city of Chicago to have access to world-class higher education institutions, especially ones that are mission-driven. So I don't know what your career paths are going to be, but I know that the School of Public Service, I'm an SPS grad, really set me on my course, and DePaul has so much to offer. So really excited. Thank you, guys, for being such an integral part of Chicago.
Thank you, Alderwoman Haddon. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Abarker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I rise in support of this resolution. I too am a DePaul University alum, a very proud class of two thousand eight public policy. And I too am one of the students of color, a first-generation, a Pell Grant recipient, a person who had to take the blue line every day and then take the flirts and busts over. So I want to rise in support and congratulate you. I am one of you. I can tell you that DePaul, my undergrad years were some of my fondest memories, and it is my DePaul professors who have supported me and to this day still support everything that I do. Part of my career trajectory was completely pointed in the direction that it did because of my time at DePaul. And so I am sad that I can no longer get a chicken sandwich at Bronco's, but that's quite all right. So again, congratulations to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
As a fellow Blue Demon, I also rise to support this resolution. I love the fact that we have diverse student representation here with us today because that what, that is what DePaul University was for me. Place to go and learn, a place to go and grow mostly into the human being that I still am becoming. It's not lost upon me, Madam Chair and colleagues, that DePaul University is the largest Catholic university in the country. It's a place where not only do people practice diverse faiths, even though it's a Catholic institution. I recall my religion class was taught by a Jewish rabbi. It's a place where we come together, learn from people throughout the world, and become a better society because of it. I'm very proud to be associated with DePaul to this day, and I'm very proud to be associated with this fine resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other members of the body that wish to speak before I go to Alderman? The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Thank you, Madam President, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. I too am a proud Blue Demon. And this gives me an opportunity to acknowledge my gratitude to the Vincentians and to the largest Catholic university in America. I'm an undergrad, class of nineteen sixty-five, in Law School sixty-eight. My wife is a graduate of DePaul. Our daughter Sarah is a graduate of DePaul Law School. And our son Travis just recently graduated. And we're so grateful to the Vincentians for establishing the university here in Chicago one-hundred-and-twenty-five years ago. What a proud institution and, and also great source of athletic pride. I was there back in the days of Ray Meyer when DePaul's men's team contested on the national level each and every year. And it was so great that the university recognized Coach Meyer with the beautiful statue that graces the campus. Campus is far different than it was all those years ago in the nineteen sixties. And the growth of the campus under Father Holssneider was just truly remarkable. And congratulations, too, to the new president of the university. It really, as Alderman Rodriguez mentioned, provided generations of Chicagoans the opportunity to receive a college education. So many of those graduates were first-time college students, first in their families to go to college. And I too want to say how important it was to have the Knight Law School. I was a product of the Knight Law School, as was John Stroger in those days, and so many other leaders of Chicago who went on to accomplish remarkable things in the tradition of the proud Vincentian policies. So congratulations to the university, to those students who are here and are carrying on that great Vincentian tradition. God bless and good luck.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Burke. Any others? Yes, Alderman Hopkins, the Chair recognizes.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution and ask to be associated with it in honor of DePaul University, which is not currently in my ward, but under the new map. Actually, I will have a small portion of the DePaul campus will be added to the second ward. And I think in many ways, DePaul and the city of Chicago grew up together. DePaul really does personify the spirit of an urban campus. You are not just resident in the city. You are woven into the fabric of the city of Chicago. And as we've heard from so many Blue Demon alumni here, you know, you're one of the preferred schools for Chicago residents. But when you bring people here to Chicago, when students come from rural states or from the western states, they always talk about their introduction to the city of Chicago as DePaul students. They know that their experience really typifies the true Chicagoan lifestyle. So many of your graduates choose to stay here in Chicago after they complete their studies. And that's a testament to the student lifestyle that you provide for them and the outstanding education that DePaul has provided for so many years. And I do have to say one thing. The late lamented Demon Dogs, you can't get one of those anymore, Alderman or Abarker, but you can get a sandwich at Bronco's. Believe it or not, they just reopened after a hiatus during the pandemic. So we'll, we'll be talking more about them in a, in a future meeting. But they're also a part of DePaul history and a, and a very, very cherished part of student life at DePaul. So thank you for being here. Thank you for presenting this to us, Alderman Knutson. I'm proud to support this resolution.
Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? Chair recognizes.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I rise in strong support of this resolution. I couldn't be more proud in the Forty-third Ward to be the home ward to DePaul. You know, DePaul is a university at its core values that stands for diversity, equity, inclusion, and public service. I've found this in all the students that I've spoken with as alderman. You know, we've, we've had people in chambers. I've, I've met with the, the DePaul Dems a few times, and I can't wait for this relationship to strengthen going forward. But also through so many friends who went through DePaul and just how they're leading their lives. They totally stick to those core values. DePaul also invests a lot in the ward. You know, it's a citywide institution, but we also just have a strong community partnership that leads to our Forty-third Ward being safer and having a lot of incredible academic work happen within our boundaries, which I think is so important. It brings a lot of people to the ward, and I, I truly thank you all for that. I want to say to President Manuel, I, I can't wait to work more with you going forward. I always joke with you that the first time when I was, had gotten appointed and read my, my, we were going to meet, and I read really fast. I was like, why am I meeting with Rahm Emanuel about DePaul? But it's President Rahm Emanuel. It's very confusing. But again, I thank you. I think DePaul is such an amazing institution. I also want to say, as someone who grew up in a town with a university or college that was called one of the most, one of the least LGBTQ-friendly universities in the country, DePaul is consistently one of the most LGBTQ-friendly universities in the country, and that goes to its core values to a T. So again, thank you. Looking forward to continuing to partner.
I obviously stand in support of this resolution. And let me brag a little bit about facts you may or may not know about DePaul. Alderman Burke is correct that it has a long tradition of, of sports, but it also has a long tradition of service, of which we are proud. It is absolutely one of the greatest assets that we have in this city. And ladies and gentlemen, every year, there are about two hundred thousand undergrads and graduate students that come to the city of Chicago, that populate our great colleges and universities. And DePaul really focuses on making sure that those homegrown students have a safe and welcoming place to pursue their academic interests. For the last one-hundred-and-twenty-five years, DePaul University has contributed greatly to our city's culture, vibrancy, and our status as one of the greatest cities in the world. Its rankings and accolades span across sports, business and technology programming, and arts and communication education. This accessible and high-quality education has launched the careers of more than a hundred and twenty thousand DePaul alumni who live and work in Chicago. That's a tremendous accomplishment about which we should all be proud. From our smallest entrepreneurial businesses to our largest corporations, from healthcare and government institutions to nonprofit and community organization, DePaul, fingerprints and leadership is involved in all of that. Furthermore, DePaul proudly boasts diversity as a strength, with forty-seven percent of the 2021 first-year class being students of color, one-third being first-generation college students, and thirty-two percent being eligible for low-income Pell Grants. By being rooted in faith, DePaul also demonstrates a commitment to service, learning, and community involvement, ensuring that as students and educators are also reflecting the diversity of the communities of our city. And that is perhaps best demonstrated through DePaul's Center for Community Health Equity, co-founded with Rush to improve community health outcomes in our city. The city of Chicago is aligned with the mission of DePaul. And I'm grateful for DePaul's work and partnership to eliminate health inequities. So today's resolution says it best. The futures of DePaul University and the city of Chicago are inseparable and intertwined. And since DePaul's founding, the city and the university have enjoyed a strong mutually beneficial relationship, which I have been happy to support and to continue during my tenure as mayor. This is a partnership. I'm honored to present this resolution and extend council's best wishes for DePaul's continued growth and prosperity. I will also say thank you for associating yourself with a certain high school in Alderman Martin's Ward. I have a vested interest in that high school's success. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise and applaud DePaul University. Up, ladies and gentlemen. We have a resolution sponsored by one of the biggest Simeon supporters in the world, Alderman David Moore. We are honoring Simeon and Mount Carmel. in the world, Alderman David Moore. We are honoring Simeon and Mount Carmel for their success on the athletic field in the fall. Come on in, folks. Okay, Alderman Mitchell.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to suspend them? Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I move temporary suspension of rules to these resolutions.
Hearing objections, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, in the box, we have Malik Elsie, who's a student athlete at Simeon, Dante Colbreth, who's a coach at Simeon, and the great Trista Harper, who's a president at Simeon, from, and Kendall Moore, who's a student athlete at Simeon. From Mount Carmel, we have Scott Tabernacki, the principal, Mark Antonetti, the coach, Blaney Dowley, a student, Asher Tomazuski, also a student, Demarian Arrington, a student, Eddie Fleck, a student, and Owen Schickel, also a student athlete. Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? Alderman Moore, I'll hold you in reserve. Anyone, anyone like to speak and celebrate these champions? The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I proudly rise in support of this resolution. I'd like to start out by congratulating the coaches and players from Simeon. Next, I'd like to talk about Mount Carmel High School. As many of you may or may not know, I am a proud graduate of Mount Carmel in four years. Mount Carmel has been providing education and teaching young men since 1900. 123 years they have been in the woodland community. They stayed in the woodland community when everyone else was running away 50 years ago. 600 boys attend Mount Carmel. During their time there, they will be taught how to be men, how to be leaders, how to be strong, develop more character. Now, today they're being honored for their 14th state championship in football, which is something everybody should be proud of. Congratulations, guys. I think it's just important to note about how these young men have been taught and their experiences these past four years at Mount Carmel, how to go off in the world and be leaders and stand up for people and be a voice. You guys are very lucky. Your parents had a lot of options, and they chose Mount Carmel. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Scott Tabernacki, a 2002 graduate of Mount Carmel, who serves as the principal, and my dear friend from the 19th Ward, Mark Antonetti, a 1984 graduate of Mount Carmel. I'd like to add, 39 years ago, Mark Antonetti was a student athlete across the country as a graduate of Mount Carmel. Scott and Mark are leaders at the school. They serve in administrative roles, and they also teach these young men. I couldn't be more proud to stand in support of this resolution, but more importantly, I couldn't be more proud to be a graduate of Mount Carmel High School. Thank you.
Ren O'Shea, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for joining us this morning. To Mount Carmel, to Simeon, we're very proud of you. City's proud of you. Not everybody gets the opportunity to be a student athlete. I think athletics provides such an opportunity for us to build ourselves, our community, but also to encounter challenges and persevere. I know I participated in student athletics. It's something in the Rogers Park community where I serve that we work to promote. You're serving your community by participating in this in addition to serving yourself. Your city's proud of you. We love to see you excel. So for Mount Carmel and for Simeon, thank you for being here. Thank you for continuing. Thank you for being winners. Thank you for being successful, and I wish you the best as you continue on your personal and team journeys.
Thank you, Alderwoman Haddon. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Ayrston.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the city council, I too rise in support of this resolution. Having been familiar with both schools for, yeah, long, long time. What I can say is that the programs in your school have been consistently excellent over the years. Back in the day when I was in high school, I couldn't go to Mount Carmel to compete because it was an all-boys school, and I was one of the first girls to join a lab school swim team and the boy's swim team because there was no girl's swim team. And so what I do know is Simeon and Mount Carmel turn out fine, excellent individuals, not only in the education that they receive, but in the way that you all represent your schools. It is not just now, but your representation goes on forever, and all of the legacies of Mount Carmel and Simeon are here in the world for all to see. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. I too support the resolution. Being a big sports fan, I am a northwest side sports fan, that is. I always admire Simeon and Mount Carmel. They're two, I only follow them for athletic unbelievable athletes they have in both of those schools. I believe Simeon has a major stud on the football team this year that's going to U of I, I think. You have a, they have countless kids going to Division One schools, and I love following local kids doing great and doing well. I'm more on the, more on the sports than not the academic and Matt, so sorry with that. So but just wish you guys the best. You make the city proud. I have one question, Madam President, if I may, if I may ask my two colleagues, Alderman O'Shea and Alderman Moore, city championship, Simeon versus Mount Carmel, who's going to win the game, guys? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. I would be remiss not to stand and offer my words of support and congratulations. I'm a St. Rita High School graduate. And I think we're getting close to Simeon in basketball. Not yet, but we're getting close. And for Mount Carmel, we're not there yet at all. But the importance of what Simeon and Mount Carmel mean to the city, you provide excellence. You're not only on the state of Illinois stage, but you're on the national stage. And you represent the city in a very, very good manner. So congratulations. Keep up the good work. It's good to see you, Mark. Thank you for everything you do as well. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Quinn. The Chair recognizes Alderman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in and supported this resolution to Mount Carmel. Congratulations, kudos. I did not go to Mount Carmel. I went to Mendel, so it's hard for me to really say that to you all. But Simeon, you all have always been a powerhouse since I was a kid. You have one of the best coaches from Mendel who coached at Mount Carmel for a long time. But Simeon and Principal Harper and Coach, I've watched countless of wins from Simeon. You have made me and David and the entire South Side proud of what you all have been able to accomplish at Simeon. And we just want you all to keep on keeping on and strive for excellence, both of you all, both of your schools. And we really are proud of you all. So thank you all for what you all done.
Thank you, Alderman Brookins. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise in support of this resolution. To all of the young men and the coaches sitting in the box, just to echo what all of my colleagues have said, thank you so much for what you do for this city and how you represent this city. We know in the national news, we don't always have positive stories. But you are one bright shining part of that. And I thank you for it because you bring communities together and you give us something to be proud of. I know in my community in the 11th Ward that the Mount Carmel pride runs very deep. I see signs all over the place. I know people are at football games all the time. And I thank you for that because you are continuing a long tradition of pride and citizenship and just doing good things in the community and becoming strong leaders in ours. And to the coaches, thank you for all that you do to churn out all of these great young men and women at your schools, not just in these programs, but it does extend to the school community and the entire city. So thank you on behalf of all of us in the 11th Ward for all that you guys are contributing.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, congratulations to both Simeon and Mount Carmel High Schools. Just a point for the record, the principal from Simeon is actually from the West Side. So you all that are always clowning on us on the West Side, Principal Harper came from Manly High School and has done great work there, as I'm sure that she's done at Simeon. But again, congratulations, Trista, and the work that you're doing out at Simeon in the, not only the, from the athletic aspect, but from the academic aspect as well of the work that's being done to help our young men and women on the South Side of Chicago. But again, we welcome you back with open arms when you decide to make that move. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else that wishes to speak to this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and to these great, great schools. Congratulations to both Mount Carmel and Simeon. I love the diversity. We went from the North Side at DePaul, and now we're on the South Side. And for the record, the Alderman of the 28th Ward went to high school on the South Side at Morgan Park Academy. Let's not forget that, Chairman Irvin. So when the West Side is ready to win championships, you all come this way. Oh, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to take that dig, but it just happened. To Coach Dante and to Simeon, I just admire the Alumni Association, the parents, just the vibe, the energy, and how you were a graduate of Simeon and a lot of the teachers and leadership at Simeon actually came back home, and it shows in the excitement, in the rich legacy of just sportsmanship and just overall, just such a great brand. I know so many of my peers and my residents from Inglewood that attended Simeon High School. So we are so godly proud of every accomplishment. We are rooting for you. I sit next to the Mr. Simeon over here, and it truly is Simeon versus everybody. So congratulations to both Simeon and Mount Carmel. You make us so proud. You make our city proud and continue young people to make your parents and your, and your core and your foundation proud.
Thank you, Alderwoman Coleman. Anyone else? Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, Madam President, as these schedules get busy and we get so many people to make so many requests, I want to thank you for allowing us to honor both Mount Carmel and Simeon today because this, more than anything, is about our young people. No matter what people are doing, campaigning or anything like that, they're talking about what? Our young people. Because it is going to be our young people that continue to make the difference. And a lot of that comes, I don't care what sport you're looking at, swimming, lacrosse, tennis, golf, baseball, football, basketball, those skills are learned in sports, and that's the greatest talent. A lot of that great talent comes from the people who play sports and leaders and become leaders. First of all, Mount Carmel, it's very rare that teams go undefeated. And it's very rare that teams go undefeated and win a state championship. So to you all, really kudos and congratulations to you all. Many times, we forget about our Catholic schools. We recognize our public schools a lot, but you are a part of the fabric of this city. And so I commend you all. Mark, thank you for answering the call to make sure these young men were down here, but more or less for leading them to a great success and a great championship. So kudos to you, Mount Carmel. Now, my beloved Wolverines, my beloved Wolverines, God knows what Simeon means to me. I don't get to do a lot. I work a lot. My guilty pleasure is being at a Simeon football or basketball game, and that excites me. But before I get to this superstar that's sitting before us, Coach Dante, you are a true superstar. People may or may not know, Coach Dante Colbreth played under the famous Coach Al Scott, and he learned under him. And it was Coach Al Scott that wanted to make sure that Dante was a coach, and he's carried on that legacy. And so thank you, Dante, for continuing to carry on and bringing that back. And Kendall, you played, and then you came back to help. And so it's because when people come back, they don't forget where they came from. They come back, and this is the best mentoring program that you can have. When you talk about what we're looking for, for nonviolence and violence prevention, this is it. And so I'm excited because you all came back and helped these young men. Now, Malik Elsie, brother, you are amazing. I did so much screaming. I lost my voice so many times screaming for you. You are looking at an All-American. He played in the National, what's it called? The National American Championship Bowl or something like that? All-American Championship Bowl. Y'all make some noise for him. Not many people get to play in the All-American Bowl. And this is players, the best players throughout the entire country. And you're looking at the best wide receiver to me in the country. And so what I'm excited about, I don't have to go far to watch him. He's going to Illinois, y'all. So he decided he committed to Illinois. He's going to Illinois after so many people recruited him. But like I said, we're raising good men to be leaders. Honor roll all four years. Honor roll all four years. And that's due also to the leadership of our great Principal Trista Harper. She was okay when she was on the West Side. She became great when she got to the South Side. And so thank you all so much, both Simeon and Mount Carmel, for giving us some great fun this season, for giving us some great entertainment, but also giving us some great pride, not only our city, but our entire state. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. Let me rise and of course join this resolution, but I want to tell you a little bit of details about these two teams. CPS's Simeon Career Academy won the 2022 Chicago Public League Football Championship, and Mount Carmel, as you heard, won the 2022 IHSA 7A Illinois State Football Championship, something both schools should be enormously proud about. Chicago, of course, is a sports city, and these teams really stand out in the, in the history of sports teams and high school teams in particular. It says a lot about, I think, not only the coaching and the commitment, but also about the quality of the young men that are populating both of these teams. At the high school level, we know there has to be incredible perseverance, determination, and talent leading these players to success. Not only did each team win their respective championship, but they were winning team throughout their season. Mount Carmel was undefeated. And as Alderman Moore says, that is an incredible accomplishment. Across all the incredible competition that you face, that you went 14-0? Kudos to you, gentlemen. Quite an accomplishment. And Simeon finished their season 12-1, also an incredible accomplishment. The greatness of these players, their coaches, and the school communities rallying behind them is clear. Some of you knew I grew up in a small town in a different state, but we were a high school and continue to be high school football power. So I know a little bit about high school football. But importantly, what I know of both Mount Carmel and Simeon is tremendous school communities. From the principal on down to the coaches, the teachers, everyone is united and pulling for these young people to make sure that they are successful. Our children are absolutely a product of the adult ecosystem around them. And the fact that you have excelled over and over and over again, not just on the athletic field, but in academics as well, really is a testament to that ecosystem around you. And the fact of the pride of the alumni, not only out in the community, but coming back to each of the schools to contribute in meaningful ways, that says something that you've got something special in each and every one of these schools. Now, I know Mount Carmel less, but I will also say Principal Harper, who we've had a lot of conversations, sometimes on good days, sometimes on tough days. But I just also want to personally thank you for everything you do, hanging in there and making sure these kids have a great, safe, nurturing environment in which to learn. So ladies So ladies and gentlemen, this is a testament to, I think, the greatness and examples of the quality of our high schools all across the city. CPS, certainly Catholic and archdiocese schools, private schools. These are the kids that have to stay in Chicago and recognize that their future and their fates are intertwined with our city, and we are so pleased to be celebrating you here today. So thank you all very much. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give it up for Simeon and Mount Carmel. Gentlemen, our final resolution is one brought to us by your colleague Alderwoman Deb Silverstein. Member in memory of Holocaust Survivors Day. Alderman Silverstein, any other members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution before we have Alderman Silverstein speak? Anyone? Anyone? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. I stand in support of this resolution. Friday, January 27th, will mark 78 years since the Soviet Army liberated the Auschwitz-Burkina-Nauj concentration camp, freeing more than 6,000 prisoners. We commemorate this event with Holocaust Remembrance Day, a day to remember those who died in the horrors of the Holocaust and to honor those who survived to rebuild. Once again, we join together around the globe with one voice and say, never again. Never again will we allow evil to overcome good and hate to overcome kindness and decency. Tragically, antisemitism is on the rise. Antisemitic incidences increased by 430% in Illinois between 2016 and 2021, according to the Anti-Defamation League. And locally, hate crimes were up 71% in 2022, according to the Chicago Commission on Human Relations. The most frequent targets are Jewish residents. This must stop. Now, we must be more vigilant than ever against attacks on the dignity and welfare of Jews and on all ethnic and religious groups. As the Alderman of Chicago's 50th Ward, I represent the largest Jewish community in the state of Illinois. I can assure you that the Holocaust Remembrance Day is very real for the residents of the 50th Ward, and it's very real for the survivors. I am grateful to my colleagues here today who have signed on to this resolution and join with me to honor the memory of those who died in the Holocaust and to honor those who survived to share their experiences and wisdom with the world. Never again. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Silverstein, and thank you for bringing this before the body. I stand in strong and full support of this resolution. Ladies and gentlemen, you know this, but there are too many incidences of hate that are popping up all across our city. We have to be better than this. We have to make sure that we stamp out hate wherever we see it, and we have to denounce the people who are propagating the hate. So again, thank you, Alderman Silverstein, for reminding us not only of our responsibility to remember and never forget the horrible tragedy of the Holocaust, but to make sure that we are diligent every day in calling out hate where we see it and uniting together to stamp it out. So thank you, Alderman. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move passage of these resolutions in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move and return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, communications.
Communicate communications from her honor, the mayor, to the honorable, the city council, the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing. I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for MHL2 Prairie District Apartments Development. Your favorable considerations of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and transmit here an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the 43rd and Green Phase Development or Green Phase Two Development. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development. I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement with American Blues Theater for the development of a vacant property located at 5627 North Lincoln Avenue. Your favorable consideration is considerations ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Assets, Information and Services. They transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an IGA with the Public Buildings Commission regarding accessibility work on city facilities. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, transmit here with a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing negotiated sale of a city-owned property located at 5036-5044 South Prairie Avenue at 5050 Prairie LLC. Favourable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Development. I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties under the adjacent neighbors land acquisition program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Redevelopment, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing quitclaim deeds transferred of a city-owned property located at 1733 North Francisco Avenue to adjacent neighbors. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Transportation, transmit here with together Alderman Riley Hopkins, Espada Martin Vasquez, the Smart Street Pilots Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, request Commissioner of Public Health, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the installation of weather stations and air monitors. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor for the Committee of Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Notification of sale of City Chicago General Obligation Bond Series 2023A Chicago Works and General Obligation Bond Series 2023B Chicago Recovery Plan. Funding loan notification of City Chicago Multi-Family Housing Revenue Note Series 2022A Auburn Gresham Apartments. An affirment of Inspector General Audit Report on Department of Planning and Development Administration of Neighborhood Opportunity Fund Small Grants Program. Office of Inspector General's Quarterly Report for Period ended December 31st, 2022, and Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for City Colleges and Cities of Chicago Fiscal Year ended June 202022. I City Clerk Anna Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on December 14th, 2022, and were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form. One-on-one more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on January 18th, 2023, but being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that ordinances authorizing imposition of tax levies, approval of budgets, and execution of service provider agreements for special service areas numbers. 1-2015, 3810, 1317, 2022, 2427, 2820, -2014, 3339, 4247, 4850, 52-2021, 59-2022, 56-2022, 6262, 6372, 7376, 77, and 880, which were passed by the City Council December 14th, 2022, and were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, which were published in special pamphlet form in December 16th, 2022. Jeez. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning classification of particular areas which refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, Claims Against City Chicago which refer to the Committee on Finance, recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation, Pioneer Arcade in 1535 North Plasky Road as Chicago Landmark which refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the mayor and other city officers.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, committee reports. Chairman Wegasback, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on January 12th, 2023, item one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute an amendment of original sales tax securitization agreement within Quentro Square 2 LP, and Quentro Square 2 GP LLC, and Quentro Square S LP LLC for additional funding agreements incorporating tax increment financing assistance in the amount of $9 million for an affordable housing project at 1800 to 1840 North Hamlin Avenue, 1821 to 1857 North Hamlin, 3735 to 3750 West Cortlandt Street, and 1820 to 1856 North Ridgeway Avenue in the 26th Ward. Unless there is someone wishing to speak, I move to concur with the committee's favorable recommendation by a roll call vote.
Roll call vote has been called for?
Yes.
Please make sure you're logged into your device and hit submit. The vote is now open. If you have an issue, please raise your hand.
412. Is the vote open? Yeah. Yeah.
Alderman Scott, I see you. We're coming. Alderman Hairston, Alderman Mits, we're coming. Christina Hairston. I will now call a roll call vote. If you have not voted, Alderman Hopkins, not present. Alderman King, not present. Alderman Hairston? Or yes, yes, Alderman Hairston is present and yes. Alderman Taylor? Oh, just came through. Alderman Scott? Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Mits? Mits is a yes. That concludes the vote, and we are now closing the vote.
Forty-seven. All right, the yeas are forty-seven, the nays are zero. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wegasback, back to you.
Madam President, item number two, a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with C40 Preservation Associates LP, POAH C40 LLC, Preservation of Affordable Housing Incorporated, and POAH TIF LLC, and the issuance of loan funding, tax credits, and tax increment financing assistance in the amount of $6.5 million for development of low-income housing and commercial space at 3137 to 3157 West Fifth Avenue and 209 South Kedzie Avenue in the 28th Ward. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the 63rd Amending Agreement with Summer Core Incorporated to extend the program to the LaSalle Central Redevelopment Tax Increment Financing TIF Redevelopment Project Area, increase funding, amend the Small Business Improvement Fund or SPIF program rules, and continue with Summer Core Incorporated as the provider of administrative services. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with M-Hub Support Corporation, an M-Hub for acquisition and rehabilitation of the facility at 240 North Ashland Avenue, augmented with eligible tax increment financing funds in the amount of $17,550,000 located in the 27th Ward. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the designation of Amendment Number One and the expanded Madden Wells Redevelopment Project Area as Redevelopment Project Area pursuant to Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. If there's no one wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the approval of Amendment Number One to the Madden Wells Redevelopment Project Area Redevelopment Plan for Expansion of the Project Area. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute adoption of the Tax Increment Allocation Financing for Amendment Number One to the Redevelopment Plan for the Expanded Madden Wells Redevelopment Project Area. Madam President, I just want to note that we have three items in each one of these TIFs, so if people are hearing what sounds like the same thing, they're actually separate votes.
Thank you.
So if there's no one wishing to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eight is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the designation of Amendment Number Six in the Expanded Bronzeville Redevelopment Project Area as a redevelopment area pursuant to Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item nine is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute approval of Amendment Number Six to the Bronzeville Redevelopment Project Area Redevelopment Plan for Expansion of the Project Area. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 10 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute adoption of the Tax Increment Allocation Financing for Amendment Number Six to provide tax increment allocation financing for the enlarged Bronzeville Redevelopment Project Area. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eleven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the designation of Amendment Number Three and the Expanded Forty-third Cottage Grove Redevelopment Project Area as a redevelopment project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item twelve is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute approval of Amendment Number Three to the Forty-third Cottage Grove Redevelopment Plan for expansion of the project area. I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item thirteen is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute approval of the adoption of the Tax Increment Allocation Financing for Amendment Number Three to the Redevelopment Plan for the Expanded Forty-third Cottage Grove Redevelopment Project. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item fourteen is a report of cases in which judgments or settlements were entered into for the month of December twenty-twenty-two, which will be placed on file with the clerk. Items fifteen and sixteen consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denials of payment of various small claims against the city. Unless there's an objection, I ask these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objection.
And item seventeen consists of authorizations for the issuance of charitable solicitation or tag day permits for the Mercy Home for Boys and Girls, uh, March first through thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And if there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Wegasback. Yes, the chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I request to have my yes vote added to the first favorable roll call of finance and a no vote on the unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Thank you.
So noted for the record. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a committee meeting on January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the committee recommends passage of the following item, an ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year twenty-twenty-two within Fund Number Nine Two Five of the Chicago Police Department. I move passage of this item by the most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology, Chairman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Tuesday, January tenth, the committee held an in-person meeting and recommends passage of the following items. The first item on the agenda is the reappointment of Charles Newsom to Special Service Area Number Sixty-One Hyde Park Commission, located but introduced by Mayor Lieford at the December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two City Council Meeting. I move for pass of this reappointment by the first favorable roll call of the vote of Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item two is an ordinance in support of a Class Six B tax incentive for property located at forty-nine seventeenth South Kedzie, forty-eight fifteen South Kedzie Avenue, and forty-eight thirty-seven South Kedzie Avenue in the fourteenth ward, introduced by Mayor Lieford during December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two City Council Meeting. I move for pass of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The last item on the agenda was a very informative subject matter hearing where no vote was taken by the committee members. Specifically, the hearing concerned the goals, plan, and approach to the annual and five-year capital improvement programs, and discussed the overview of the programs with those leading its development in addition to the departments with the most funds being utilized. Vice Chairman Mitchell, ECD committee members, and I would like personally thank every city department that participated and contributed to the hearing's success. Deborah Ritzberg of the Inspector General of the City of Chicago Office of Inspector General, Jenny Bennett, Chief Financial Officer, Susie Park, Budget Director, Sandra Blake Moore, Commissioner of AIS, Tom Carney, CDOT, Andrew Velazquez Aviation, Andrew Chang, Water Department. We look forward to continuing these important conversations concerning the capital improvement program in partnership with the departments. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, Vice Chair Nugent.
And members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, which held a remote meeting on January sixth, twenty-twenty-three. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Items one through six were a series of appointments to the Urban Forestry Advisory Board. They are Jessica Vogt, James C. Melka, Cindy Schwab, Daniela Perea, Nuri Medina, Rolanda Favella. Unless anyone wishes to speak to these appointments, I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, the Committee on Health, Alderman Sawyer. You want me to pass you? The Committee on Health and Human Relations, Chairman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Health and Human Relations, which held a remote meeting on January ninth, twenty-twenty-three. The committee recommends passage of the following items. The first is approval of O two zero two two dash three nine nine three, Amendment to Municipal Code Chapters Two dash one twenty five dash eight, six dash ten, six dash one hundred, and six dash one twenty regarding prohibitive discrimination against bodily autonomy with exceptions for certain religious organizations. I move passage of the first item by the most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The second item is approval of R two zero two two dash one four one seven in support of Iranian Citizens Human Rights Movement and encouragement of United Nations Human Rights Council intervention regarding human rights suppressions. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Third item is approval of R two zero two two dash three three two, call for recognition of Roberto Clemente's place of death in Luisa, Puerto Rico, on the National Register of Historic Places. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a remote meeting on January tenth, twenty-twenty-three, the committee has a series of reports recommending the following. Item number one is an ordinance commemorating fifty-seven oh eight North Ridge Avenue is Marion Jean Kennedy Valini Plaza in the forty-eighth Ward. This community green space in Edgewater is to remember a transformative community and citywide leader, Marion Valini. Marion Valini was the third alderwoman in the city of Chicago and a trailblazer for future women that were to seek public office. She served our city at a very challenging time and was a trusted and strong ally of Mayor Harold Washington. In everything that she did, she brought people together in our community and our city. Her work in the seventies and in the eighties in our community has been the foundation for a lot of the positive success that we see in the forty-eighth ward today. I ask for and move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. But before I also, I want to recognize her family. Many of you know Mike, her son, Mike Valini, who's with us today, and her grandson, Michael Valini, daughter Emily Valini, Marcy Landis, and the rest of the Valini clan, Monica and Mimi. Thank you.
Objection, so ordered.
Item number two is the sale of city-owned property at forty-two thirty-two South Wall Street to Maria Teresa Dominguez under the ANLAP program in the third ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is an amendment to the ordinance to correct the bidder's address for the sale of city-owned property at fifty-nine fifty-two South Loomis Boulevard under the ANLAP program in the sixteenth ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is a lease agreement to Cumberland Acquisition LLC for office and parking space at fifty-four forty North Cumberland Avenue that will serve as a Chicago Police Department EAP office to serve those men and women in the Chicago Police Department and Fire Department. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five was the housing report that we reported, the twenty-twenty-two Q three housing reports. I also, before I conclude my report, want to remind or let members of the council know that on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, next Tuesday at ten a.m., we'll have a subject matter hearing with CHA and CHA's leadership to talk about all things CHA. So that will be an in-person meeting here in the committee or in the council chambers. All are welcome. If there are particular issues you'd like to cover, please contact me or my staff. But beyond that, Madam Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman.
Ten a.m., Tuesday. Thank you, Madam President.
Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on January the ninth, twenty-twenty-three. The following items were passed by the committee. Item number zero two zero two two dash one seven five six, a substitute ordinance to amend the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding requirements for prohibiting issuing of additional retail tobacco license, Alderman Apollo Tunnel and others. I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the Licensed Finance Committee by the same role, License Committee, as the same roll call voted as item number one of the Committee on Finance in its same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Objection, so ordered.
It was four ordinances regarding moratoriums in the twenty-first ward, the forty-fourth ward, forty-fifth ward, and the forty-seventh ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number zero two zero two two dash three nine eight nine was an ordinance to amend Chapter Four dash eight and seventeen dash nine of the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding license requirements when defining an urban farm and accessory billing. This matter will refer to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Billing Standards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Mitz. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, January twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Before the committee, there were a hundred and eighty items. There were a hundred and seventy-nine routine items that passed and one routine item that did not pass. If there's no objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Wait, Chairman Brookins.
Good morning, Madam President. Reporting on your Committee for Transportation and Public Wait, a meeting which was held on November tenth, two thousand twenty-two, and January twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, the following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. Number one, on page two, we had a Kimball, and I'm going to just read this one out, the Kimball Area Curve Management and Mobility. And then on page two, the second item on that page, we had the Norfolk Southern Railway, of which Alderman Taylor, Bill, Irving, Hairston Harris, Burnett, Curtis Dow, Moore, Rodriguez, Sito Lopez, Haddon, Vasquez, Coleman, and Rosa are asking that that be deferred and published.
Deferred and published.
I'm sorry?
The matter will be deferred and published.
Thank you. Next, we have on page three, one, uh, on page.
With Chairman, one moment.
So I'll read it out. The one we're deferring and published is zero two zero two 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 three nine five. Does that help, Jeff?
That one will be deferred and published. That's the one.
That is correct.
Did you also call three nine, three nine, three nine?
Right. That is not being deferred and published.
Okay.
The Kimball Station Area Curve Management Mobility is not being deferred and published. Only zero two zero two two dash two nine, I'm sorry, that's two three nine five. Is that straight, Jeff?
I, I. Do you move passage?
I'm sorry. I move passage of the Kimball Station Area Curve Management with the last most favorable roll call vote on the vote on finance and unsuccessful vote to reconsider.
All right. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
All right. Then next, we have on page three includes one ordinances for grants of privilege introduced by the local alderman from the fourth ward. On page four and five include fifteen ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the alderman from wards two, nine through eleven, twenty-seven thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty-seven, and forty-eight. On page six includes two vacation ordinances located in the fifth and thirty-fourth wards. Your Honor, if there are no objections, we move passage of all of these items except for the item that was deferred and published by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
I hear no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Chairman. Last committee hearing, our committee report, Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, Chairman Tony.
Madam President and members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on January seventeen, twenty-twenty-three. Reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by the majority of members present. Page one contains the appointment of Brian Sanchez as Chair and continuing member of the Zoning Board of Appeals to run concurrent with his current term as a member. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains the reappointment of Andre Brumfeld as a member of the Chicago Plan Commission for a term effective immediately and expiring January twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-eight. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains the reappointment of Sarah E. Lyons as a member of Chicago Plan Commission for a term effective immediately and expiring January twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-eight. Move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number zero two zero two two dash three nine four one, the amendment of application number two one oh nine oh to correct the boundary description regarding the zoning reclassification located at twenty-eight thirty-three West Forty-seventh Street, twenty-nine forty-nine, I'm sorry, twenty-seven forty-nine through twenty-seven fifty-seven, twenty-seven forty-nine through twenty-seven forty-five, all on West Forty-seventh Street, and forty-seven seventeen through forty-seven twenty-three South California Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Objection, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number two zero two zero two two dash three seven eight five, which contains amendments to ordinance number SO twenty twenty-two dash two thousand. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one through eleven contains various map amendments in the first, third, fourth, eleventh, twelfth, twentieth, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirty-eighth, fortieth, forty-second, forty-third. I'll come back to that one in a sec, or there's multiple in forty-three, but motions in forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-nine, and fiftieth wards. I do want to note that in the forty-third ward, document number zero two zero two two dash three eight seven eight, there is a no vote by Alderman Hopkins in that issue in the forty-third ward. Otherwise, I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Noting the objection of Alderman Hopkins, and no other objections, so ordered.
Page twelve contains various large signs over one hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade, in the eleventh, fourteenth, twenty-third, twenty-seventh, forty-second, and forty-fifth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Tony. Thank you, Chairman Tony. Next up, uh, matters on the agreed calendar, Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I've received from the city clerk Andrea M. Valencia, total of a hundred and twenty-six items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions from the following aldermen, Alderman Dow, Alderman King, Alderman Harrison, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Harris, Alderman Lee, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Gardner, and Alderman Capelman, and I move the passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
Uh, hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, new business. Uh, the clerk will call the wards beginning with the first. Mr. Clerk.
Claims free permits, exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance, zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, an exemption from the physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond La Spada has proposed ordinance for issuance of permits for signed signboards at nineteen fourteen West Chicago Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Dow has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirty-three hundred South Michigan Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Harris has proposed ordinance for dedication of public ways in the area bounded by East Ninety-third Street, South Greenwood Avenue, East Ninety-third Place, and South Drexel Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Siloski Garza has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title Nine by adding a new chapter nine dash one sixteen regarding deactivation rights for transportation network providers and third-party delivery service network workers, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Lee has the proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as honorary Mike the Hot Dog Man Carajan Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Lee also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as honorary Sylvia Toy Carajan Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Quinn has proposed ordinance for renewal designation of the forty-fourth and forty-seventh precincts of the thirteenth ward as restricted residential zones prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Coleman has proposed order for historical landmark fee waiver for the property at sixty-four oh two South Green Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond O'Shea and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapters four dash sixty-eight and eight dash four by adding new section eight dash four dash zero seventy-six regarding assault against emergency workers, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Almond Rodriguez has proposed ordinance for a vacation of portions of West Twenty-third Street and South Spalding Avenue within the area bounded by West Twenty-four Street, South Christian Avenue, West Twenty-second Street, and South Sawyer Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Tabarez has proposed ordinance for designation of the twenty-sixth precinct of the twenty-third ward as a restricted cannabis zone prohibiting new or additional cultivation centers, craft growers, and processing, infuser, dispensing, and transportation organizations, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Tabarez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter two dash eighty-four by adding a new section two dash eighty-four dash five oh one regarding parental leave within Chicago Police Department, which is, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Two committees having been called, the Committee on Public Safety and the Committee on Committees and Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Almond Scott has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package good licenses on portion of West Roosevelt Road, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Scott also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package good licenses on portion of West Harrison Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Sito Lopez has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as honorary Darius Darko Teague Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Sito Lopez also has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as honorary Felipe Phil Ayea Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, and a proposed order for the issuance of permit for signed signboard at twenty-two, twenty-three thirty-two West Sermec Road, and a proposed order for a sign, signboard at twenty-three thirty-two West Sermec Road, which is referred, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Sito Lopez and Alderman Ramirez Rosa have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title Three by adding a new section three dash twenty entitled Employers' Expense Tax and Development Incentive Ordinance, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations and the Committee on Committees and Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Almond Sito Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for the investigation on legality of recent Cook County property tax increases and utilization of TIF funds for homeowners at risk of foreclosure or scavenger tax sale, which is referred to the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Almond Sito Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for public hearings on Ponzi schemes significantly targeted towards Latino community and linked to U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission investigation, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Almond Sito Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for public hearings on rate hikes by ComEd and People's Gas filed with Illinois Commerce Commission, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Almond Tilafiero and Almond Vasquez have proposed resolution to call for hearings on membership of Chicago Police Department members to the Oath Keepers Organization, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Almond Wagasback has proposed, has posed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-nine twenty-three North California Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter seventeen dash seven, by deleting figure seventeen dash seven dash zero five seven zero and modifying section seventeen dash seven dash zero five seven two to include additional boundaries for additional dwelling units allowed areas, which are referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Almond Ramirez Rose has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Belmont Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Ramirez Rosa also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package good licenses on portion of West, West Diversey Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Viegas has proposed resolution to call for support of administration of economic census and encourage partnership maximizing economic census response rates, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Almond Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of South Michigan Avenue and East I W Wells Drive, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package good licenses on portion of West Grand Avenue and North Wall Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, and a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section eight dash thirty-two dash sixty-five, designating portions of Superior Street, North State Street, Chicago Avenue, and North Wabash Avenue as noise-sensitive zones, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Almond Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, and a proposed ordinance for vacation of East Bellevue Place within the area bounded by North Rush Street, East Oak Street, and North State Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Knutson has a proposed ordinance for issuance of a permit for assigned signboard on north, portion of North Clark Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Tony has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package good licenses on portion of North Broadway, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Gardner has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at forty-eight thirty-three North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Osterman has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as honorary Marge Britton Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Silverstein has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package good licenses on portion of Northwestern Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, and a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package good licenses on portion of Northwestern Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. And Alderman Irvin has proposed resolution to call upon the Committee on Public Safety convene hearings to examine the failure in maintaining adequate emergency response times to meet the public safety needs of the underserved residents, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of all the medic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next up, the approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal from the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next up, unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Thank you. Uh, miscellaneous business, um, Alderman Mitchell.
I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
And the date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk.
Be it ordained by the City Council of City of Chicago, the next regular meeting of the City Council of City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, February first, twenty twenty-three, beginning at ten AM in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. The ordinance shall take effect and be enforced until after its passage.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Omnibus, um, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. See you February first, everyone. Thank you. We adjourn. Thank you. We adjourn.